Good afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of June 10th, 2025. We're going to resume this afternoon with public hearing item number seven, and I will turn it over to Director of Preservation Cory Harala to give us through the afternoon items.
Thank you. Public hearing item number seven is LPC 25-08754, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 1499, Lot 1, 1060 Fifth Avenue, AKA 1060 to 1065 Fifth Avenue, and 1 to 9 East 87th Street in the Expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. This is a neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by J.E.R. Carpenter and built in 1927 to 28. And the application is to alter masonry openings and install a new window.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Erin Ruley-Higgins, Quaysbarthen Partners. Good to see you again. Long time no see. I had coffee. So we are the preservation consultants for this project. I'm joined today by Scott Soteel of Ferguson Shimamian Architects, the architects for the residence, and Andre Mora, the shareholder for this application. This is an application at 1060 Fifth Avenue, which we see here on the right. It's located on the northeast corner of East 87th Street and Fifth Avenues. And what we're going to be looking at today is the inclusion, the creation of a new window at the 10th floor on the Fifth Avenue facade. Here is a detailed view that shows the existing condition of that line of windows. And as we go through the presentation, you'll see that the windows were added all pre-designation. The openings were modified. And so this is a proposal that will allow for a more consistent treatment by locating a new opening within this masonry pier, and it would be consistent with what's happening below and regularize the overall condition of the facade. So on the left is the tax photograph showing you the original condition of the building. J.E.R. Carpenter, 13-story neo-Renaissance-style apartment building and constructed in 1927. And you can see at the time of construction, it had a very symmetrical composition across both the facades on East 87th Street and Fifth Avenue. And by the 1990s, at the time of designation, where Carnegie Hill extended, the openings within this line, this is the B-line of apartments in the building, the majority of the windows in this line had been modified. And so you see the details here. The fifth floor, which is the floor right above the existing balustrade at the base, right here. The fifth floor, the seventh floor, eighth floor, and ninth floor were modified. These are more consistent within the shaft of the building, so very sort of planer brick condition, unlike the fifth-floor condition. And then also up at the 12th and 13th floors, these new openings have been added. The condition here is that because these are modified openings, staff can approve new windows to replace the existing windows. So the assumption is that the shareholders would continue to maintain their openings and would replace windows over time at staff level. This is not like a typical, like, single-pane window that is added where their applicants are forced or required under the rules to go back to the historic configuration. This is a modified opening that gets treated differently than a standard single-pane window. And so the condition has paired double-hung windows, one-over-one windows, with a central, single-pane window at the center. And these are the only windows that have been modified on the building. And it seems to be unique to this B-line of apartments. All of the floor plans in the original apartment building had distinct plans. And the B-line, the entryway, is here. So you see sort of the elevator and the foyer, and you enter through this. And so it seems that the interior plan was really driving these changes over time, where people wanted that connection to the exterior, and that that's what drove the changes prior to designation. And so now we have this condition where 7, 8, and 9 are modified, and then 10 and 11 are not, and then the sixth floor. And so by creating the new opening, it makes it consistent with the three floors below and creates a sort of horizontal grouping, so that you have the 11th floor and the fifth, sixth floor framing that horizontal grouping and creates a much more composed condition, albeit altered, but it is more internally consistent and has a more sort of rational approach than what exists today. The windows at, this is the ninth floor here. The ninth-floor windows were just approved for replacement. And so we based all of our details on the approved ninth-floor windows. So again, that one-over-one double-hung flanking, the fixed-picture window. And it creates a mulian, sort of architectural expression within the opening, giving the mulian division between each of the window types. Of course, the Commission has approved modified openings on primary facades in the past. We just looked at this one earlier this morning, 360 Central Park West, where evidently has not matched their bricks very well, but has, they created larger openings in these outside bays, having paired double-hung windows in that, a new line of windows on this Candela Building on the west side. And then similarly at 720 West End Avenue, where the windows in the outside bays were actually expanded, and it created a new window type that wasn't present in the facade at that time. And so while this is a more limited installation, it really feels like it's helping to establish that continuity across the facade. And then just a rendered view to show you the existing condition, and then the proposed condition, which again, we think is much more consistent, allows for that horizontal grouping and the framing at the floors above and below. And that's it. If you have any questions.
Vice Chair Bland?
Go to the elevation that you have this. It's just easy to see in the elevation. Question here. So there are three that have changed, have added the window, but 1, 2, 3 that have not. So it's even, right? It's a horse race.
You look at the whole, yeah. Yeah.
No, I don't. I mean, you're making the point, I think, oh, I see. You're, I'm not including the archmans. But you're also making the point that the three are together, as opposed to the ones remaining, or two up top and one down below.
One, yeah. Framing it at the top.
Right, and I think that when you were explaining that the staff is authorized to approve window replacement in these altered openings, that it's unlikely that those would be reversed at this point. Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's see if we have any public testimony. And I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you will be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Lo van der Valk.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Excuse me for a minute.
All right, we'll continue with our next speaker. That will be Zainab Turan.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. My name is Zainab Turan, and I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. While Friends does not oppose to the proposed modification of the existing 10-story window opening on the Fifth Avenue facade to align with the nonoriginal penetration of the 7th, 8th, and 10 floors on Line B, we believe that a more comprehensive strategy is imperative for the remainder of the building. We regret that the penetration of this distinguished Carpenter design currently exhibits a disparate array of sizes and a mix of single and double-panel windows, alterations that predate the Historic District designation in 1993. This can be rectified through the establishment of a comprehensive window master plan. Such a plan should serve as a guiding framework for all future alterations, thereby ensuring a unified aesthetic and the restoration of the original symmetry and rhythm as initially conceived by Carpenter. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HGC finds this proposal to be inappropriate, and we are left wondering why the masonry openings were allowed to be altered in the first place. We find the enlarged masonry openings to be inappropriate for the style of the building and note that the facade composition is meant to be symmetrical. HGC asks the applicant to work with the LPC to prepare a master plan for the window replacements on this building that should be based on the original configuration of the windows. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Lo van der Valk. If you're ready, I'll be promoting you to panelist.
Yeah, this is Lo van der Valk speaking. Can you hear me? Yes, speaking on behalf of Carnegie Hill neighbors. This is, this has gotten to be a more complicated project than we at first thought. But as I understand it, they're adding this window, tripartite window, will bring some symmetry in the vertical pattern in that the, is it the 6th and the 11th floors will remain open. We would, of course, favor a master plan, but I don't know if a master plan can actually encompass breaking through an existing wall. I mean, that's usually not part of master plans, but that's up to the Landmarks Commission. The, given, in the absence of that, we would be inclined to favor this alteration because the existing windows, tripartite windows, are already predominantly in place. And I might just add that two of the windows in this vertical lines are not tripartite. They are, they are just simple window openings and in part dictated by the different treatment of the windows in their respective horizontal lines, which have subdued hoods for all the windows. So with that as a background, we, bottom line, yes, we would like a master plan, but if that's not possible, we would be prepared to accept this alteration. Thank you.
All right, anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board 8 recommends denial.
Thank you very much. Recommended denial. All right. So Erin, please go ahead and respond to anything you'd like.
I think, obviously, of course, master plan. But I think any master plan would need to assume the permanent condition of these windows. And so a master plan would not then revert back to two-punched openings. It would be, what is the appropriate treatment for those windows? And we think that this is the right approach, and it could be a model if the building were to ever go forward with a master plan. But it seems to me that this is a permanent condition, and it improves upon that condition. But it doesn't mean that it couldn't be addressed through a master plan in the future for all window replacement on the building. And I think it's a, obviously, it's interesting that it only happened in this one line. And you know, prior designation, we saw all sorts of modifications happen to windows that sort of happened in that 1990s period. But, and so it seems to me that some continuity and rationalization for a condition that we view as permanent is what's needed here. And it's about how do you treat those openings as opposed to whether or not openings belong there.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? It's Commissioner Chu.
Just a question about the building's structure. And I look at the existing floor plan, there's not a column right there. No column on that line, clearly, if those other windows are all there.
Yeah.
Because the symmetry side on the other side looks like it has a column there, which would make that very difficult to make a master plan. Yeah, that's why it never happened.
It never happened, and it has a, let me see if I can go back.
It looks like a beefier.
Right here.
Yeah, right there.
And then it looks like this is the column, maybe, and then between the units.
Yeah, and then that's not the one where you want to put a window right there.
Is this the column?
It might be.
Yeah.
And then it jumps your bay to the next. Yes. Okay, thank you.
So it will not happen all over the facade.
All right, any other final questions? All right, we're going to move to our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. We know this is an application to modify or combine these two window openings to match the configuration on the other three below it in this line. And it does seem to be a unique condition that allows for this on this building and why this occurred prior to designation as well. Commissioner Luttrell, would you like to start this one?
There's been change in this line, and there really are only a few floors that don't have this configuration. It seems to work with the rest of the facade. I can improve it.
Commissioner Chu?
Same. I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. It is a train wreck. It ruins the symmetry of the facade. It breaks the rhythm of the facade. Train wreck, but I think it's, I think in this case, you know, it sets a terrible precedent. I can't think of a reason why it should be appropriate, but I think it is.
I'm sure you like that, John. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Appropriate, although I understand Commissioner Goldblum's concerns.
Commissioner Chen?
Same here. That's going to go down in history as a memorable quote.
Vice Chair Bland?
I agree, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin?
It's fine.
Okay, all right, so we are all in agreement. Commissioner Luttrell, would you make the motion?
Sure. In the matter of docket 25-08754, 1060 Fifth Avenue, AKA 1060-1065 Fifth Avenue, 1-9 East 87th Street, Expanded Carnegie Hill District. A neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by J.E.R. Carpenter and built in 1927 to 198. The application is to alter masonry openings and install a new window. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, but only a small amount of plain brickwork will be removed to combine two window openings at the Fifth Avenue facade, and the facade will maintain a high solid-to-void ratio. That the combined window openings at the 10th floor will harmonize and align with the pattern of the existing masonry openings at the 7th through the 9th floors and 13th floor, and will not disrupt the more prominent intact four-story building base. That the new window assembly will match the historic windows in terms of details and finish, and the pair of double-hung windows and central-picture window will match the existing combined openings in terms of materials, operation, and configuration, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell? Eight in favor, nine opposed. The motion passes.
Thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number eight, LPC 25-10179. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Staten Island, Block 570, Lot 1, 172 St. Paul's Avenue in the St. Paul's Avenue Stapleton Heights Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style rectory building, later converted to a freestanding residence built circa the 1830s, later altered. The application is to legalize the construction of a portico and the installation of a porch railing without LPC permits.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing via Zoom. Lori, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen, and then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Okay, hi, and thank you so much for hearing our petition today. It's really exciting to hear the previous petitions and sort of very, very interesting to hear how these procedures go. We are seeking approval to legalize work. That was an iron railing in the front porch and a side portico, both built as good-faith replacement and builds. This is our, the current view of the house, which is the first house in the Stapleton Historic District. It is a former parsonage, built in the Greek Revival style. And you can see sort of the, just the street-facing view, and I think it's sort of beautiful. I'm going to try and, oh, here's the Stapleton Historic District, and our house is the first house in the district. It is a former parsonage of the church that was built across the street and previously demolished. It's alleged to have been built in the late 1830s through the, possibly the 1840s. And it's had a number of faces in the 100-plus years that it's been alive. The neighborhood, whoops. Let me try and go back. Oh, no, no, the other way, sorry. Oh, that's interesting. I'm having a little difficulty. Hold on. There we go. Okay, there's the, you know, the situation of the house on its lot. It's a setback from the street and then the side. This is the front, obviously, and then this is the side where the portico was built around there. It's the Paxton Avenue side of the house. This is the neighborhood and where the house sort of sits. Each house in the historic neighborhood is standalone, one-of-a-kind home, built, you know, with a lot of different architectural styles. Ours happens to be Greek Revival. But the neighborhood is known for Victorian era and pretty special. This is the house in its, I think, Saturdays, but this is the early 2000s. It was without the railing. And this is around the time that the house was included in the Historic District. It notices, it just doesn't have the porch at all. I mean, the railing at all. This is a sort of a before-and-after. This is around the time that we purchased the house. This was the condition that it was in. And then on the right, the condition that it exists today with the railing. So we hope that this was, when we purchased the house, there was sort of a, not very special wood railing that was probably from a box store. The railing that we did install was commissioned by a local fabricator. His name is Scott Van Kampen. He runs the, and is the executive director of the New York City Maker Space. That's in Brooklyn Navy Yard and also on Staten Island. And it's a solid iron railing as opposed to anything hollow or sort of à la carte. So it's a custom-forged solid steel railing, and then it has a beautiful sort of, I think, lovely detail that is sort of expressed on the stairs and porch itself. These are examples of iron railings in Greek Revival. Obviously, that's not a new thing to have iron railings in Greek Revival. There's even a petitioner later on the afternoon. I wish I'd had a picture if I'd known. I think the State Street, a house or a residence is considering an iron railing and as it currently exists. So here's an example of similar-era Greek Revival ironwork in Richmond, Virginia, not in New York, but a continuation of like very varied styles and then also very, I think, very beautiful and appropriate. Here's the Garden Club, again, in Richmond, Virginia. I noted this because it's around the time of our house, which was 1845. And so here's an example of the ironwork here with a very grand, you know, sort of a structure. And then on to the portico, which was not present when we purchased the house. You can see it's sort of, it exists here, but this is sort of a barren, open, and it sort of left the house and the area sort of indefensible from the elements. And so we, this is what it looks like right now as you're approaching it. This is Paxton Avenue. Sorry about the trash. And this is sort of the sneak-up view from the street. And then here it is in all its glory. It's sort of a lovely, I think, period that matches the integrity and the style of our, of the larger home. It's old-growth wood. The dentil molding here, and obviously here in the snow, mirrors the side dentil molding. And these are all solid wood. I'm not going to say of the period, but they're definitely, you know, heavy, appropriate reclaimed wood. And then here's side view. It's not attached, you know, it's attached, obviously, to the home, but not enclosed. And then here's the dentil molding that I talked about on this side in the, and sort of the, you know, a nice little consistent view of the portico and then the railing, sort of. You don't realize that you don't take pictures of your house without people in them until you need to. And then here's the Biddle House, which is sort of the only house that I could research that is, I also know about it very, very well because I sort of modeled our home aesthetic on the Biddle House, which was landmarked in, it's a landmark house in Tottenville. It's a very similar age. It's obviously much grander. And there's sort of a hint of a portico here, and then a removal of it here and then stairs. And I just sort of, this was, thought this was a good example of, you know, how a house changes over time based on who's in it and, you know, what the needs of the house are at the particular time. Here's an example of triangular pediment in Greek Revival homes, obviously the White House. No correlation I'm attempting to make between our house and that structure, but just to sort of like bring it on home that Greek Revival and, you know, in this style of pediment is, seems appropriate. Examples of protective porticos, which I thought was important in the way that we, the thought process that we had in needing that was because it was exposing the house and us and the interior to sort of the elements. And this really created a nice, sort of a more entryway. And then just here's the very faces of our lovely project that we were custodians of. And so this is the, when we got it into we got it in 2016, it just had a different look as we sort of, you know, sort of took care of it and brought it back to a, I think, a very beautiful and, you know, simple aesthetic. So thank you so much for your time. I'm very grateful for this experience, and I hope that you'll find in our favor.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
I've a few. The first one is, how did this work get done without coming to Landmarks?
I agree.
No.
Well, we did have an architect who gave us sort of good faith advice. It just turned out not to be good and just the faith part. And, you know, she said, as long as you're replacing with same or better, then you'll, I, I possibly think she said, you'll probably be okay. And so we just took that as sort of, you know, a naive but also well-intended opportunity.
Did you know you were in a Landmark District?
I did.
Okay. Then, next question, the stairs seem to have been a lighter color than they are now. Is that correct?
The stairs, sir?
Yes.
It's not.
They're now a darkish gray, and they look, in some of the photos, to be a significantly lighter color.
There was a, there was a staff approval of the changes that we made to the
Okay.
Yeah.
And that may be in the next question. In the older photos, there was a trellis underneath the porch, and that seems to have been removed?
Yeah, that was added by, that was added, let me see if I can, I know, but that, it wasn't original to when Landmarks approved it, and it was added by the person who sold it to us in 2016.
Saying added without a permit, so you removed it too?
I mean, I, again, the, I'm trying to go back to the original picture. Right. I mean, there was not, it's hard to describe here because when it was originally, there was no trellis here, and there was no porch here. They were added like a year later and by the gentleman who sold us the house.
Okay, so they were modern features that were removed. Other questions? And just with the railing, did the, did the deck get deeper as well?
Uh.
It looks like the deck comes out a little bit further than it initially did.
Well, I don't want to, I don't believe so. I think it was a consistent footprint. And so I'm just gonna say I don't know, but I think it was consistent with the.
Okay. Other questions, Commissioners? All right, we're gonna take public testimony, and then we'll come back to you after the testimony.
I so, thank you so much. We'll talk to you later.
Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HDC finds all elements of this proposal to be inappropriate. The portico does not match the Greek Revival style of the house. It is overscaled and incorrectly detailed. The relationship between the frieze and the columns is classically incorrect, and the cutout in the pediment should be removed as it follows more of a colonial style. The Doric columns appear to be missing their capitals and maybe their bases. Wood is the vocabulary of the entire building, and thus, HDC objects to the proposed iron porch railing. It should be wooden to match what was removed. We also note that using Greek Revival precedence from southern states is irrelevant and not appropriate. HDC asks the commission to reject this application in its entirety and require the applicant to work with staff to find a more appropriate precedent that adheres to the Greek Revival style. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be John Graham.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society, New York. The side portico would be appropriate if it were properly redesigned. That means eliminating the strange cutout in the pediment and adding capitals to the columns. Other details may also need to be adjusted. The metal porch railings installed without a permit are not appropriate unless there is documentation for historic metal railings at this porch, not at some porch in New Orleans. The porch railing should be wood, and they should match those removed or be based on documentation for historic railings at this house. We note especially that the unusual turned wood newel posts may have been original features. We also note the removal of wooden lattice below the porch. This should be restored, and we wonder whether the design of the column capitals and change to the porch fascia, all work done, which seems to have been done without permits, is based on documentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next speaker is indicated as iPhone 3.
Hi. My name is Tricia Ryan. I am a neighbor of Lori and Roberts on St. Paul's Avenue. I've been in the Historic District before it became a Historic District. I've lived on the street for the last 25 years. The honors changed what was a very big eyesore in the community and have, and significantly improved the property. The wood railings and the lattice that you referenced, those were added when the property was purchased and then flipped to Lori and Robert, and they were not done well and were not very secure to begin with, and didn't bring any light to the house either. The, what they did do with the porch railing, it is gorgeous. It has improved the view and look of the neighborhood, and I, I thought it was an amazing, you know, addition. Understanding all of the Landmarks rules, everything that they've done has been with care and has improved the, the neighborhood. I would say the value of my home is they have improved the corner of the house. They look appropriate. They do not look out of place to the community. It is the only Greek Revival on the street. You see very few within our area and in the Staten Island area. So in bringing the other neighborhoods' references, they're appropriate because there's not a lot of references to even bring to connect to the Staten Island area. So I would hope that you guys would approve of the additions of these. They are, they are appropriate for the neighborhood and the aesthetic that we have.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Staten Island Community Board One recommends approval.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to any of the comments we've heard? I'm turning to the applicants now.
Hi, thanks. I was having a little trouble unmuting. I really defer to your expertise in so many ways. I've seen it, you know, time and time again, and as I sat in on the morning session and heard the previous petitioner as well. That being said, I think this is unique in that this is an occupied, single-resident home that is sort of, I guess, taking in that when you, when you buy one of these homes, you're sort of the custodian of it, and you guess, you just do the best you can. And I just want that for the record to show that the condition of the home that we received it in was not in any way spectacular or special or pretty even, and I just loved this house so much, and I feel like I put a lot of love in it. And while you might have either aesthetic or historic reasons for, you know, for making certain comments, the, the difference is, in other petitions, is that this is a live, a living thing. Like, this is something that people use on a, you know, we know this house inside and out, and I just feel like, I'm not like, heard about it, but I just want you to hear me as a layperson, as a non-professional, but somebody who really knows how to, I feel like respectfully inhabit a space. This was what we did.
All right, thank you very much. Right, Commissioners, any final questions? All right, I think we're gonna move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Hearing is closed, and we have two aspects of this application to review. Some other work has been and is being reviewed by the staff. And the two parts that are before us are the replacement of a modern railing with a new, a modern picket railing with a new wood, sorry, iron railing and on the porch, and the creation of the portico on the side entrance. And I think that there may have been some changes to the decking in support of that railing that we can consider as well. And I think the applicant has, and I think it's very clear in the presentation that you really have been a custodian of this building, and it has much improved from the time that you purchased it, and we thank you for the care and love that you put into this building. And I, you know, I can only stress how important it is to reach out to us if you're not sure if you need a permit because sometimes even the best of intentions may not align with the rules. And so it's always a difficult situation when we find someone has put a lot of love and investment into a property to try to do the right thing, and it's not something that aligns with our rules. In this case, we'll have a discussion about these two elements, and we'll see where we land on it. Commissioner Chu, would you start this one?
So there's two items in the proposal. The first is the porch railing, and then there's the entry to the rear of the house. For the porch, I think clearly the Greek Revival house would have had a white painted guardrail that looks like it would have connected between the columns on the front, and it does appear that the porch was extended out further. And in light of the applicant's comments and presentation here, my, I find that, yes, we have seen metal railings put on porches before. There have been cases where we've approved them. I think, you know, in terms of the modernization of this building, my issue there isn't so much the, that it is a simple picket fence. It, it is the ornamentation that is on it, and there's certain, most of it is, seems very simple in vertical sticks, which I think is okay. It's just that, yeah, there's, there's middle sections that are extremely ornate that I feel are, are a strong departure from this, this historic style. So I, I would be okay keeping this if those were replaced with straight sticks. In terms of the, the entry at the rear of the house, there are definitely issues with this, with the details here, as was mentioned previously, missing the capitals on the columns. My biggest issue that I would, will point out right now is just the cutout seems very awkward, apart from just inviting a lot of animals to live in there. If that could be just filled and, 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 you know, keep the details there, but just fill that in with the flat there, the triangle and the top detail, I think I would be okay with that as a reparation for what has already, all the effort that you've put into this, into this piece.
Commissioner Goldblum? It is, it is.
I'm sorry, we've closed the hearing, so.
Oh, it is closed.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay, so it's, I don't know, Marie, if you can elaborate on that, but at this point, we are in a discussion session. The hearing has been closed, and we're in what's called a public meeting. So we, the only people who can speak are the Commissioners, and the staff can interject if there's something that needs clarification. So, Marie, I don't know if you can talk about how open or closed that is, but I think the main issue is really the, kind of the shape of that cutout.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, thanks. So, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, it is, it is closed. There's a black panel on the interior, so it looks like it's open, but I don't know if there's a better photograph that shows that there's, yeah.
It'll look like Chippendale.
So it would have been a feature that was most likely applied to a wall surface, not to the end of a projected portico. So it got roofed over.
It looks like it was bought as a kind of, a, a single item from a lumberyard or a decorative woodwork stop. That may not be the case, but it looks that way. And I, I, I would share with the other comments have been, that have been made so far to congratulate the owners on having taken care of this lovely house and really caring about it and making it better. And your best friends in this case are the staff at the Landmarks Commission. Not only can they keep you out of doing things that are gonna get you into a hearing like this, but they can also guide you as to materials, the right way to do it, and it'll wind up looking better and being automatically okay from a regulatory perspective. I think that looking at the, this side entrance, you can buy column capitals and kind of have them fitted around the top of your columns with a good woodworker. That'll help it a lot. I think filling in the, the Chippendale top with moldings and details to match what you have, making it a little simpler. I mean, you yourself said that part of the essence of this style is its simplicity, and what you did to it was to make it simple. So I think this might jump out at us because it's not so simple, and our suggestions would be towards making it simple. Another thing that'll help this little addition is carrying the moldings that are on the front around the side. Part of the problem with it is that it looks like it's just been applied to the front. So if you have a molding, let's say, that little notch above the front lower panel, you carry that around to the side, and it'll make it look like it's a 3D element like the White House. So I think the staff can help you with all those little details. And as to the front railings, I think the staff should look into the extension of the, the front porch. If that indeed was extended, it might warrant a different approach, because that's pretty important. That's the front of the building. I agree with Stephen otherwise about the, about the metal railings. Another thing that you might do if you're gonna go to the, you know, if we're gonna ask you to modify that central panel, is to, one thing that would make it look better and more consistent with the house is instead of having the, the railings to plug into the centers of the fronts of the columns, to have that return go before the width of the columns and kind of plug into the sides of the columns, making the overall railing width a little bit narrower so it'd fit in between the columns. It would give the columns more prominence, and it would make them look more like they looked when the wood railing went in between them. But other than that, I think it's, you know, you've done wonderful work on the house, and thank you for working with us.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
So first I want to note, I appreciate your love of the building and the restoration work you've done. I also just want to note, the last building was not totally typical. Most buildings we see are fully occupied when we're reviewing issues. And then I'd also note, you have worked without a permit, and our And then I'd also note, you have worked without a permit, and our standard, which has been alluded to, is to review this as though you were coming to us before you did the work, and there wasn't a violation. What would we approve without the work having been done without a permit? I totally agree with Commissioner Goldblum and Commissioner Chu on their comments, and I think, working with staff, you can resolve both the overly ornate railing, the issues with the portico with that sort of black hole that, if nothing else, may be fine if it's just painted white to fill in. And so I can improve it with those modifications and then working with staff to resolve them.
All right. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I mean, total agreement with all the comments. I think the cutout should be filled in to keep it simple, and then the railing, obviously, should be simple.
Vice Chair Bland.
I think I'm in agreement as well. Certainly, the pediment needs to be filled in, painted white. I guess we're of two minds, or we are of two minds so far, as far as I hear it, regarding the railing. Some want to simplify, particularly the curlicues in the middle, and just make it straight and then leave it alone. Others, I think, have said, maybe I didn't hear it right, that it should be all replaced with wood.
I think we've mostly heard that people could support this if it was modified to be simplified.
All right. I think I can do that. It's clear that the deck has been made slightly larger with that little cantilever, and therefore, filling in between, which would have been more appropriate, is now no longer possible, or at least if it is, it leaves a funny little piece of the deck on the other side of the rail. So I guess we are where we are. And for me, I think your clear love and hard work, I love the picture of the power washing, mitigates, I think, to some degree, these details, and I would not have approved this the way it is, but here we are.
Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah. First, I want to assure the applicant that we do review all the time residences, you know, individual homeowners and ones that are very well-loved and cared for. And I believe that you really sought to do that yourselves, and I respect your work restoring the facade, and I can hear that you had sincere intentions of trying to use the best quality in what you were doing. And I also have a lot of sympathy with people that are doing their own applications, and I think you did a good job of that. You know, you really didn't need someone else to do it for you. So at the same time, unfortunately, as even was shown by many of your examples, a couple of the choices you made aren't as suitable as they really should be for the house. So in the first case on the portico, I agree with others that it's just not, it's not of the simple style that, if you look at all the other porticos, you will see they follow, actually, and which is more typical. But I believe, as others do, that, working with the staff, you can modify the existing one so that you don't have to put in a new one, but you can modify the existing one. I think on the fence, on the porch, it would have been wood, I think, but metal is, as others have said, too ornate, because it would be very simple and not draw attention to itself. So simplifying it, I agree, we can go along in this case with using a metal fence and simplifying it. And I also agree completely about the issue of not obscuring the pillars, that you wouldn't, I think you would not see that, and it also detracts from your house. It'll look nicer if the pillars do not sit in front of the, or enter the existing pillars. But I think all of those things can be done, working with the staff, and hopefully with some not-too-major modifications.
Commissioner Lutfi.
So for the most part, I agree with my fellow commissioners, and I do, it is clear that the applicant has not only taken a lot of care with their home, they also did a lot of research. So I do a little bit take exception to the fact that they, with all that research, they didn't come to us. I'm okay with, I'm okay with everything, filling in the portico, trying to, you know, working to encapsulate capitals on the columns there, and not, in the front, not obscuring the pillars in terms of the railing. I do have to say, I think you're doing the home, and looking at the depth of this porch is important. I do think you're doing the home a disservice by having a metal railing. I think it's just too light for the home, and I would encourage you to think about putting a wood, a simple wood railing here. I think it would give your beautiful home even more character and enhance the work that you've already done.
All right. Okay, so I think, you know, where we are is, I think that most commissioners can support the existing condition with some modifications, and I think that if some of those modifications are difficult to make, it may be easier to just do a simple wood fence, and that could be done with the staff at staff level. So we'll make a motion to approve modifications today, but you can also explore that path with the staff as well. And I'll just read it, because I've written down all of the modifications we've suggested, so I'll incorporate them. "In the matter of docket number LPC 2510179172 St. Paul's Avenue in the St. Paul's Avenue Stapleton Heights Historic District, a Greek Revival-style rectory building later converted to a freestanding residence built circa 1830s. This is an application to legalize the construction of a portico and the installation of a porch railing without Lumberghs Preservation Commission permits. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the St. Paul's Avenue Stapleton Heights Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the work did not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the elements of the portico design relate to the Greek Revival style of the architecture, Greek Revival architecture of the main house, that the portico is located at a secondary addition and is set back from the street, that the presence of a railing at the porch is stylistically appropriate and necessary for fall protection, that the painted, black painted iron work, that black painted iron work is commonly found on houses of this age and style, and that with certain modifications, the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or historic district. However, this approval is conditional upon you working with the staff to refine many of the details, including filling in the cutout in the portico, exploring wrapping the dentals around the portico, and exploring, applying capitals to the columns of the portico, and with regard to the fence, removing the ornamental panels within the iron work and exploring attachment details that avoid the center of the piers." And with that, Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Good.
Thank you. And John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Lutfi. Eight in favor, nine opposed, the motion passes.
So please continue to work with the staff, they're here to help you, and hopefully we can come to a quick resolution with you. And we'll now move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number nine, LPC 25-10354. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 261, lot 50, 48 Garden Place in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is an eclectic row house built between 1861 to 1879. The application is to alter the areaway and modify window openings.
My name is Raquel Richter from Plot Dana Architects. Did I change that? There we go. From Plot Dana Architects, here about a project for 48 Garden Place in Brooklyn Heights. We are requesting to lower the window sills of two garden-level areaway windows by about two feet. We will be lowering the grade of the areaway and reconfiguring the steps to the garden-level entry, and these modifications have already been approved at staff level. Here are the existing in 1940s primary facade conditions. So within the row, there is precedent for this work to drop the areaway window sills within a dropped areaway. At the corner, 54 and 56 Garden Place have already dropped their areaway window sills, likely before landmark designation. 46 Garden, our neighbor to the right, has dropped their window sills, and this was approved at LPC public hearing in 1997. And 50 Garden, our neighbor to the left, was recently approved to drop the areaway window sills at LPC public hearing in 2024. And down the row, 40 Garden Place had the same work approved in 2023 at public hearing. Here is a closer look at the three dropped window sills at 46, 54, and 56 Garden Place, mentioned on the prior slide. And here are our existing conditions at 48 Garden Place. These are the street-level elevations. On the left, the existing conditions, showing two awning windows at the areaway, and on the right, the proposed elevation, we're proposing two double-hung windows. On the upper left is the full elevation as seen from the dropped areaway. The other drawings on this page show the other work that was approved at staff level to reconfigure the areaway. We are asking to lower the window sills by two feet, two inches. And lastly, here is a broader survey of the block, showing a pattern of dropped areaways and areaway window sills. Those are highlighted in pink. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this one? All right. We're going to move to public testimony, and we'll see if we have additional questions after that. Is there anyone in the room would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you. Anyone joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function, after which you will be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Judy Stanton.
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We support this application. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be John Graham.
Okay, he's back. All right, John, if you would please unmute yourself, you may speak.
Good afternoon. Sorry, good afternoon, Commissioners John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The Victorian Society supports modifications to the areaway at 48 Garden Place to create a larger sunken terrace in front of the iron gate leading into the basement. However, this can be done without dropping the window sills of the existing basement windows. The handsome proportions of this pair of windows and their relationship to the well-detailed masonry adjacent to them should not be altered. The string horse running below them should be retained. The new section of facade exposed when the sunken terrace is enlarged should be detailed to match the section of sidewall adjacent to the existing sunken terrace shown in the photos. Commissioners, I'll just note that during the Staten Island testimony, all of your voices dropped as if there was some problem with the system. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
All right. Thank you for that note. We'll look into it. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. I'd seen that, I'll note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval.
Thank you. So we have some support, and there were some comments about the windows. I don't know if you'd like to address those, or you're welcome to, if you would.
I mean, it's, there's been so much work to the adjacent row that, you know, I don't want to use a majority, it's about half, a little bit less than half, have this dropped sill, double-hung condition. So we feel that it's fitting with the block, and I think this last slide really shows some of the architectural variety at the ground garden level that exists in the area. So we don't feel like it'll be out of character.
Great, thank you. All right, commissioners, any final questions? Let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll begin our discussion. So this is to modify the areaway and drop the window sills at the basement level in a way that has been done elsewhere within this block and approved by this commission, recognizing that the basement level is an area where living habits have changed over time, and we have, given the context, approved it in this row. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I feel that there are so many examples of this on the row, and it is a very typical thing that we approve, and I think it's perfectly appropriate myself.
I'm going to change the order and move toward Brooklyn Heights resident.
Okay. Oh, my God, we're going clockwise. Counterclockwise, whatever it is. Yeah, well, for those of you who don't know, this is Brooklyn Heights' most beautiful block, I think, generally speaking. It's just one block long, and it's extraordinary, wonderful houses. This has been done before, as has been pointed out, up and down this row. It's a relatively minor change. It accommodates the lower living area much better, so I think it's completely appropriate and I'd vote for it.
Commissioner Chen.
I couldn't agree more. I wonder why, you know, could this even be done the staff?
Yeah, the staff can approve lowering 50, up to 50% of the areaway, and beyond that, it kicks it in.
It's not in the modifications to the window openings themselves. On front facades, there is no staff-level rule that allows that.
All right, Commissioner Ginsburg.
I agree, totally appropriate.
Does anyone disagree or have a different thought? Okay. All right, so I think we'll go ahead and make that motion to approve.
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, borough of Brooklyn, LPC 25-10354, 48 Garden Place, Brooklyn Heights Historic District, an eclectic row house built between 1861 and 1879. Application is areaway and modify windows openings. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural. Recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant. There is a precedent for lowered and altered areaways with similar depths in the row, block, and historic district, that the bluestone paving and brownstone-tinted spigot cladding at the base of the facade and stoop pose by the excavation, and the proposed steps and curves will be consistent with the treatment of other altered areaways and harmonious with the building design. The lengthened basement-level openings and replacement windows will be well-scaled to the facade and not draw undue attention to the basement windows will match the historic windows in terms of depth. basement windows will match the historic windows in terms of details and finish and will be consistent with houses in the row in terms of will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or historic district.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Luckey? Aide in favor and opposed, the motion passes.
It's approved, thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number 10, LPC 25-09077. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1959, lot 12, 419 Clermont Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse designed by T.B. Jackson circa 1866, and the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Carroll. My name is Robert Bianco with PKSB Architects. I'm joined today with the other PKSB project team members and the building owner is here, John Lehman, to answer any questions that may come up. This is an application for a rooftop addition and rear yard extension at 419 Clermont Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. The building was originally constructed as a single-family home and was converted to multifamily in the late 1930s, around the time that this tax photo was taken. And I just want to give a little background on that conversion just quickly, because I think it helps explain some of our thinking behind this, these alterations. The building was, when the building was converted, it was done in compliance with the multiple-dwelling law and the building codes that were in effect at the time, which actually required very minimal modifications when converting from single-family to three-family. So, kitchens were added at the upper stories, and a fire escape was added to the rear, and that's basically it. That's, that's all that was done. And there have been very, very minimal alterations since. The original wooden staircase at the interior still, it was left in place and still exists today, and largely the interior layouts are unchanged. So, the goal of this proposal is to maintain the multiple-dwelling occupancy and to provide the necessary life safety upgrades throughout the building. A new fully code-compliant stair will be provided at the interior, and the building will be sprinkled throughout. So, that will allow us to remove the rear fire escape, and expanding the footprint of the building will allow us to provide two legal bedrooms at the rear of the building. An aerial view locating the project. We are one of a row of four at the middle of the block on Clermont Avenue between Greene and Fulton. Photos of the existing conditions at the front of the building, the, the street facade and street-facing windows are in very good condition. No, no modifications proposed here, other than minor repairs and maintenance that will be addressed with the staff per the LPC rules. Existing conditions at the rear, you can see the fire escape that was added when the building was converted. And additional photos from our rear yard, looking in both directions into the open space, you can see several other projections into the open space, some, some prior to designation, some post-designation. And visible from our roof on the lower right-hand photo is a three-story, commission-approved addition at two of the townhouses facing Vanderbilt. They were combined and expanded. Axonometric diagram showing the modifications to the bulk existing condition on the left, proposed new rooftop addition on the right with mechanical equipment, private terrace at the rear, and protective railings throughout. And looking in the other direction, looking at the rear of the buildings, existing condition on the left with the, our neighboring building has an existing two-story addition, we are proposing a three-story addition that will align with, with the base of that adjacent addition and a one-story rooftop penthouse. Again, no changes at the street facade. You can see the rooftop addition and elevation here, and that is set back more than 16 feet from the street facade. Existing elevation at the rear, sort of expanded to show the adjacent buildings for context. The upper story will be maintained in its existing location, and the existing openings will be maintained. Since we are trying to accommodate two bedrooms at the rear, we are showing four windows instead of three, but the overall size and scale of the windows are in, in alignment with the adjacent penetration, and the rooftop addition also set back beyond. 1887 Sanborn map showing the open space on the block. And this is a block plan of what exists today. There are two other commission-approved three-story rear additions on the block. One of them is along Vanderbilt, which I noted earlier. These, these two townhouses were combined, converted to multifamily, and extended in the rear with a small stair bulkhead above. The other is down the block a bit at 407 Clermont, where the rear was extended, three stories, and a small rooftop addition similarly scaled to what we're proposing. And there are two other two-story rear additions on this block. One is at our neighboring property to, to the north. And just for clarity, looking at the block plan in 3D, this is looking toward the buildings along Vanderbilt, the rear yards of the buildings along Vanderbilt, and you can see the, the previously-approved three-story addition here and various other additions prior to designation. And then looking at the rear yards of the buildings along Clermont. And our building, our proposed three-story addition with the two-story adjacent and a previously-approved three-story down the block. Floor plan diagrams showing the additional floor area at the, the garden level, parlor level, and the level above. The top story will retain its existing footprint and a small penthouse addition at the roof. And in section, again, existing bulk in the yellow, additional bulk in the, the light pink. We are indicating excavation here, that the final extent of excavation is still to be determined, and will be dependent on the depth of the adjacent properties' footings. The intention is to match the adjacent footings, to not have to do any underpinning. The cellar is only for utilities and storage, so there's no, not a need to expand the footprint of the cellar, only what's required to support the addition. Photos of the two other commission-approved three-story additions on the block. Clermont Avenue and then on Vanderbilt. And conditions at the rear, our neighbors' two-story addition, and to the south, our neighbors to the south also have some projecting balconies into the open space. Our proposed rear and rooftop addition, we're proposing a light-colored stucco finish for all of the additions, just to be consistent with what exists today, and the majority of the rear facades of these buildings have either a light coating or a light-painted brick facade. At another view, where you can see another taller building also encroaching into the open space down, down the block. And our proposed visibility diagrams of the mock-up that was erected, that, these are photos of a mock-up that was built prior to the community board meeting, which was very, very minimally visible. Since then, you can see just a kind of a strip of visibility beyond the cornice. Since then, we went back and, and lowered the, the mock-up about six inches to eliminate that visibility, and I will note the satellite dish will be removed. And, and here on the summary side, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Chu?
On the rear, you had mentioned you're demoing the full existing rear facade. You're not keeping the top, it wasn't clear, are you keeping the top floor?
Sorry, yeah, we are keeping
Okay, so you're going to keep that and then refinish it with a similar stucco repair job?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And your addition is 10 feet deep and aligns with the neighbor, and is that comparable to the other approved three-story additions?
Yes, yeah, they're roughly 10.
The intent is to align with the neighbor, from what I could tell from your presentation.
Yes, the intent, which is 10 foot 9, I'm not sure the exact depth of the other approved additions, but it's comparable.
Can you just make sure your drawings say that align with existing neighbor? Because that's something that will come back, and that dimension was different, but if that's the intent, then that'll be clear. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we're going to, yes, Commissioner Luckey.
100 feet, very deep, it's very narrow.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're going to move to public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please come up to the microphone. You can, there's a button on the microphone to turn it on, and you state your name, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. That's not on.
Okay. Hi, my name is Brian Stewart, and this is my wife, Bettina Schneider, who was born and raised in Brooklyn. We live at 417 Clermont, next door to the proposed development at 419. And Bettina's late father, Martin Schneider, fought fiercely alongside Otis Pearsall to establish the very first historic district in New York City in 1966. We've lived full-time in the neighborhood since 2005 and have owned the property at 417 since 2013, where we live with our kids, and until she died in August, our mother-in-law, my mother-in-law. The proposed development at 419 Clermont is not a homeowner, homeowner reservation. This is an investment project by an individual who lives elsewhere in the city. This is not about creating housing, as the architect claimed. The committee meeting on May 7th, the committee, as you probably know, accepted the proposal only with modifications to the bulkiness and, and elimination of the, of the rooftop bulkhead and reduction of the proposed extension by one floor. As the developer's plans presented on May 7th, the third-story extension and rooftop bulkheads are not in keeping with any additions from the past 20 years in our block's donut, built within the past 20 years, as noted by the CB2 Land Use Committee. The proposed extension would block southern light and views from our third-floor windows. The fourth-story tenant terrace would be directly outside our fourth-story bedroom, impacting both privacy and quiet. The configuration as drawn would undermine light, privacy, and quiet. The rooftop bulkhead raises additional concerns about noise, damage, and safety, what happens when party guests leave the proposed fence area and spell it onto the neighboring roofs. We understand that future use isn't under CB2 or LPC purview, but it matters. Without a live-in owner, there's no accountability. Each and every property within our block donut that built an extension within the past 20 years, including ours, is owner-occupied, not a development project. We established this through door-knocking on, in the first weekend of May. To note, the mock-up of the roof bulkhead was, was visible from the street, sounds like that was addressed, even with full tree cover. We shared these images with the Land Use Committee at the CB2 on May 7th. The developer has also resisted the notion of covering customary professional fees for the access agreement and engineer oversight that's typically covered for neighborhood properties, resulting in us having to hire a lawyer. Dominic Cullen, PE of Degree of Freedom Engineering, who worked with us on our own building, cited the statistic to me that one in seven excavations within New York City properties damaged the neighboring property. Our goal is to divert any damage, I'm sorry, avert any damage rather than to fix it afterward. Although some of our issues may not be within the LPC purview, the overarching approach, overarching approach of the developer with a three-story addition and an occupiable rooftop bulkhead, bulkhead is not addressing the well-being of the community nor the aesthetic preservation of our block. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? All right. We'll move it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who seeks to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelist, and we ask for you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Kaylee Johnson. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HTC finds the rear yard addition to be one story too tall. The predominant rear yard addition for this donut is two stories, and anything larger or taller than this should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rosaria Sinisi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm Rosaria Sinisi, representing Citizens for Responsible Neighborhood Planning of Clinton Hill and Fort Greene, Inc. We believe that this application proposes additions that are out of scale with the historic block and its immediate neighbors. Applicant's block plan shows that in the donut, of a total of 55 houses around the block, 2% have four-story additions, 2% have three-story additions, 9% have two-story additions, and 24% have one-story additions. Thus, the preponderance of additions on this block are one or two stories in height. The height of the proposed rooftop bulkhead, combined with the proposed three-story addition, would be a visual intrusion into the rear yards. We also recommend that applicant be required to present detailed design specifications regarding its plans for the stoop, ironwork, and newels, as well as restoration of the original areaway fence and garden-floor window grills. While the applicant states on his plans an intention to, quote, "fully restore the existing stoop steps, railing, balusters, and newel posts," unquote, and the current photos show the original cast newel posts encased in concrete with a bit of the original visible at the top, on page 10, the application for the completed proposal appears to represent them still encased in concrete, which is not appropriate for a, quote-unquote, "restoration." We therefore recommend reduction or elimination of the penthouse, reduction of the rear yard addition to two stories, and a requirement that the applicant fully restore the original ironwork on windows, areaway, and stoop along Clermont Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends conditional approval on the condition that the ironwork on the stoop is restored, the rear yard extension is reduced to two stories plus the terrace, and the rooftop bulkhead is reduced only to what is required by building code and does not include habitable space. Also note that Society for Clinton Hill recommends the applicant be required to restrict the proposed rear yard addition to two stories, reduce the height of its proposed bulkhead, and provide design specs for the stoop and fence work.
Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
Yeah, I, I'll respond to a couple of the architectural items, but first I'll introduce the building owner to respond to some of the other concerns.
Introduce myself. I'm John Lehman and from New York. This is my only project, my first project, my only project I'm currently doing. The building is not very livable at the moment. I'm trying to make it more livable, I'm keeping it multifamily, the exact number of, that's on the current CFO, obviously making it fire code compliant. I did reach out to my neighbors, spoke to them both in person, the neighbors here, the, the other neighbors on the other side, and offered to stay in communication with them throughout the process to make sure it is comfortable, you know, for everyone as possible. to make sure it is comfortable, you know, for everyone as possible. I had tea with my neighbor to my right, 421, about two weeks ago. They've asked me to work with them on the hours of operation. They work from home, which I've already spoke to my contractor about. I'll have Robert speak about the front facade and the stoop. Obviously, if you have any questions for me, I'm available. Certainly plan on being there on-site to own and manage. Like I said, it's my only project, my full-time job. Obviously, any issues, I'll be on-site and available. Once the building's up and running. I have three young boys. I hope one of them can live here one day. I know you mentioned most of the block is owner-occupied. That is my ultimate goal for my recently 14-year-old, so we all plan on staying in New York. So that is my long-term goal. In any case, anyone have any questions for me? Thanks.
Yeah, and I'll just address, I do want to clarify the comments on the stoop. Our intent at the stoop is to repair what is there. The newel posts that were shown in the 1940s tax photo were removed prior to designation. What exists today are concrete encased. The iron railings going up the stoop do require some repairs and we're going to address all of that per the landmarks rules with the staff. It's not a full restoration. It's a lovely idea. It's not part of the application at the time, but we do want to make it look nice and clean and follow the landmarks rules. And I was going to, oh, yes. Just to comment on the concern of being out of scale. This is a really tiny footprint and, as noted, a lot of the buildings on the block are, not all, but many of them are single-family or two-family. This is a three-family building, 20 feet by 40 feet. That's it. So extending into the rear really helps to provide a livable layout with two, still very small, but two legal bedrooms and a nice living space at the front of the building.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Sarah Paulson from PKSB. I did want to say that in terms of looking at the rehabilitation of the building, because there was a comment about how much of it is intact. When they renovated the building in 1941 into a three-family building, they located the kitchens in the front and the bathrooms in the middle and were able to locate all of those things that need chases and plumbing in basically the same positions. So while we're going to do all-new systems, the floorboards have, or the joists have already been cut. Where there has cutting, which we can see because unfortunately the beautiful plaster is not there very much, it's going to be very easy to do this by sistering. So the amount of work that has to be done to the bones of the building is not dreadful. And I'm very happy to hear that the neighbors' engineer is Dominic because we worked with him on the reconstruction of the collapse, the Christmas Day collapse on the building on Sixth Avenue. So our structural engineer is Stu Gold, who is wonderful and is in full touch with John about minimizing whatever we have to do so no underpinning will be required and very little work to address anything to affect these side buildings. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, commissioners, any final questions? All right, no, sorry. I guess it's a different person, so if you'd like to speak, you can come to the podium. But I don't want to have a sort of back and forth here, if that's okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So.
Can you just state your name?
Oh, my name is Bettina Schneider. Brian is my husband. We live at 417 Claremont. Our, the neighbors in the other building at 421 sent a letter and of objection to the scale as well. And I'm not sure if you received that letter, so I just wanted to ask here. They were not sure if it was going to be read out loud or if it was just something that was received and, you know, read by the commission.
We don't read people's letters out loud. People are welcome to come and, or join on Zoom and testify. But any letters that we do get in advance of the hearing, we share with the commissioners before the hearing so that everyone's had a chance to see it.
Okay, thank you. I have one other note just about the development, the scale, and the potential for overdevelopment of the neighborhood and the block and this setting a potential precedent for the kind of overdevelopment that happened in a neighborhood like Williamsburg, where, you know, free-market rentals abound and this kind of like maximizing FAR strategy is employed typically by developers. So just wanted to note that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll now close the hearing. Commissioner Luttrell, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to be looking at this application. There are two parts of this that we're going to be looking at. There's restoration work that's happening at the staff level on the front and repair work. We are looking at the proposal for the rear yard addition and the rooftop addition, which at this point have no visibility. The applicants have provided documentation about the block plan to show that there are other, a couple other three-story approved additions in the block and those, I believe, were also approved with rooftop additions. And I think that these are deep lots and that may be why we've approved the three-story additions in the past in this block. We did hear a lot of testimony on, with concerns, expressing concerns about construction, noise, air, light, and air in use. And while those things are not under our purview, I'm happy to hear from the owner that you're taking your neighbors seriously and you'll continue to talk to them. But those features or factors will not be in our discussion today. So we will be discussing the height, depth, and design of the addition in the context of this block. Commissioner Ginsberg, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. So although not in our purview, I'm happy to hear it's remaining a multifamily building. And I'd also note that who is renovating it is really also not in our purview. So I understand the concern, but that also, so there are really two things to talk about. The rear yard addition aligns with the neighboring rear yard addition and is keeping the fourth-floor wall, the existing fourth-floor or top-floor wall. And the rooftop addition was minimally visible, but after the community board, as I understand it, it was lowered, so it's not visible. I also note that excavating to the adjacent footing and not having to underpin should minimize the risk to adjacent buildings. And I have to say that this is following our rules and is appropriate, but I think is approvable. And I'd also note that it is not trying to maximize the FAR because they had a diagram showing the FAR and someone could build a much bigger building on this site. And so I can approve this.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, as Commissioner Ginsberg said, this is following our rules and is preserving the top floor and on the back. And the rooftop addition is not visible, and so this is approvable.
Vice Chair Bland.
I agree with the two previous commissioners who have just spoken. And I think it, I wouldn't call them our rules. I would say they're traditions really of approving, of allowing the top-floor windows to remain. And we've approved many three-story additions like this. In the past, it would be unfair of us in a way to go back and not approve it here, even though it does have implications for the neighbor. I understand that we all live in a big, complicated city, I guess, and these things happen sometimes.
Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, this block does have, you know, virtually no, I just got about three rooftop additions, which is very unusual. And it does have very few three-story additions. And at the same time, you know, 2016, we approved something that's almost an exact duplicate of this, a three-story with a rooftop. It is, you know, not extending farther than its neighbor. And as you pointed out, Chair, there are very deep, you know, it's very deep lots. So, you know. I feel that it is approvable. I also note that, you know, the progress of additions has been relatively slow and I do not think that the neighbors' fear of, you know, sudden radical expansion and have to come before us anyway is likely to occur, nor is this typical of some, you know, sort of very built-out condition for multiple dwellings or something of that nature. It's, I mean, multiple inhabitants of a unit. So I think this is not unlike other approvals that we normally do.
Thank you. Commissioner Luttrell.
Yeah, I concur with my fellow commissioners. I want to say that it's a very nice project. It's really very understated in its design in terms of the rear yard and, you know, so understated, nobody even mentioned it, which we always do. And the backyards are very, these lots are deep. So even though in some blocks, you might really feel the extra height, you don't feel it here, which I think is important as well as the fact that this is so understated and obviously that, you know, we don't approve it if you try to go up to the top. But I think they've been modest in whatever way they can, including listening, you know, looking at the visibility issues for the rooftop addition and then reducing the height. And it's fantastic that there's no underpinning. I mean, I'm truly hopeful that, look, what was two or three stories, there is going to be some impact on the neighbor while the work is going on. But the fact that there is a relationship here between the parties for both sites, I think it bodes well, so I can approve this.
Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, I would agree with those comments. The two neighboring houses also have a projection. One is one story, the other's two. And the lots actually on this side of the block have more yard than the opposite side right behind them because those houses have a setback on the front. So in terms of the amount of projection on their lot, this is, as long as it's aligned to the neighboring projection, it's not going further than that. I think it's appropriate.
And Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree. I'm usually very skeptical about the rooftop additions when the block appears to be relatively entrambled with them. But here, that is not the case. So I think that the scale and positioning of the rooftop addition, especially since the visibility was eliminated, is appropriate. I think that the case has been made that the block has enough additions in the rear yard of this size, of this height, that this is not an anomaly. And in terms of the issues that the testimony raised about density, I would just note that this is, that it is the history of these buildings in, you know, in their post-construction years for many, many decades to have been multifamily houses. And I think an argument could be made that these neighborhoods thrived and grew and became historically significant in some significant measure as multifamily houses, even though that was not their initial construction intent. So I think that that fact here is actually to be, in my opinion, as a New Yorker, maybe not as a commissioner, is to be celebrated.
Thank you. All right, so I think we can make a motion to approve Commissioner Ginsberg.
With regards to LPC 25-09077, 419 Claremont Avenue, Fort Greene Historic District, an Italianate-style row house designed by T.B. Jackson circa 1866. Application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rooftop and rear yard addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that other rear yard additions of a similar height and depth exist within the block, and that the proposed three-story rear yard addition will not overwhelm the building's or the block's central green space, that the proposed rooftop addition will be set back from the front and rear of the building, maintaining a sense of the building's original massing, that the off-white stucco finish and black double-hung windows and doors in punched openings and grouped assemblies at both additions will harmonize with the fenestration and finish of the existing rear facade and will be in keeping with other rooftop and rear additions found throughout the district. And the work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Luttrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and not opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number 11, LPC 25-03090. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Block 2101, Lot 47, 230 Cumberland Street in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is a transitional Greek Revival and Italianate-style row house constructed in 1853. The application is to replace windows and construct a rear yard addition.
Hi, my name is Seppi. I'm the architect for the proposed work at 230 Cumberland Street. Thank you all for your time. So we are proposing a rear yard horizontal enlargement and front facade window replacement. So beginning with the bulk plan, you can see here where the horizontal enlargement is proposed in the rear. It's just infilling the planned top-right corner of the property at one story. This is an existing three-family, four-story, and cellar building and we're renovating the parlor floor, the basement floor, and the cellar to function as a larger home for a growing family. The building owner actually will be residing there and they want to make it more functional for their family. They actually have a newborn or they would be here at the moment as well. Moving on to the block plan, I think the most notable thing in this block plan is to observe that our project location is actually not visible from any public thoroughfare at all. And as we move through the plans, you'll see that the trees on the property itself would be blocking the one-story enlargement. Another thing to note is that the majority of the additions on the block are also filling from property line to property line the width of the rear yard with the addition, whereas when the one on our property was done, it was done setback from one of the sidelines. So basically, we're proposing to just infill that so that the basement floor functions in a better way as a, for a single family with their bedrooms and bathrooms laid out in a more functional way. Moving toward the front facade of the building, basically, the Moving toward the front facade of the building, basically, the, you'll see in the 1940s tax photo here, the one-to-one windows. Also, the neighboring homes can be seen in these photos as well. And something to note here is that we are looking to replace all the front facade windows just in place with a one-to-one window, rather than the original two over two windows that were done when the building was created. So basically, we want to recreate the 1940s window style as opposed to the 1850s version. And you'll see in the next slide, these are the neighbors on the row. The majority of the windows have the one-to-one window style, the one-over-one window style. And then you'll notice that the homes directly on the right and left of our home, 232 and 228, they were actually built by the same architect, same owner, in the same year. So we're especially trying to just stay in the style of these two homes on either side. And that includes creating the taller window at the parlor level. In the photo earlier, you'll see that the infill was done a bit poorly. It's not aged very well. We basically want to put in the taller windows and remove this brick that is aging in a very different way than the rest of the facade. And that way, it'll match its neighbors as well. Moving back to the rear facade, these are some images of exactly where we're proposing the horizontal enlargement. It is just at the basement level. There would be a deck above that the kitchen of the parlor floor leads out to. So the fire escape, the bottom-most portion of it would be removed, replaced by that deck with a ladder down to it and then stairs down to the back. So the existing egress is not being changed at all. These are some additional photos of the neighbors from the rear yard. Basically, we're looking to 228 Cumberland Street as inspiration for the style. We're looking to replicate the very minimal, beautiful stucco work and the black windows, pretty much looking to replace our rear windows in place on the levels three and two that we're not touching, just so that they're cleaned up with our rear facade work. We're also looking to re-stucco the back, basically just clean it up, make it beautiful. As you can see, the existing is pretty patchwork. There's paint left over that some tenants had done in the past. You'll see the windows are white, and as we replace them on levels basement and level one, we'll just in place, replace the windows above so that they're cleaned up and match. You can see the trees that are on the property that further block the view of this house, especially at the basement level. Our project location, again, some photos that show that even in the winter and as well as the summer, there's no view to this home. This would be the only location that it would, that homes aren't actually filled in the whole way, but you still can't see because of the projection of the closest structure. Additional photos showing the view from Fort Greene Park as well. And then in our front elevations, you can see that all of the work is just to repair and replace, sorry, just to repair and restore all existing details, the cornice, the lintels. Nothing would be changed except for the windows. This is our proposed elevation. You can see the taller windows here. All other details to remain and be repaired, again, just to clean up the front facade of the building. And then our rear elevations showing in the proposed version, you can see the deck that would be placed over that horizontal enlargement. This is the existing, an existing section that shows the existing fire escape and the modification that would be made to it to get onto the deck. And then, these are some renderings that show our goal for the final state of the building. Again, it's just to clean up the back of this beautiful property, make everything read within the same language. We're proposing to have the horizontal enlargement be flush to the existing addition so that it's appropriate to the rear facade. We don't want to add to the undulation and breaking of the facade in any way. And as you can see in the floor plans, I'll show you how this allows them to have a much more functional basement floor. They got two bedrooms for their growing family, a comfortable primary bathroom. It's essentially the primary bathroom that this is allowing them to have. And then the entrance out into the rear yard. This is the level one proposed floor plan, where you can see that the kitchen would be facing out to the rear yard, again, and the circulation onto the deck and down into the rear yard from it. And then these are our window details, just showing that we propose to basically replace exactly the original state of the windows. We want to take off the aluminum that's existing there currently, that's covering the original brick mold. And we discovered that the brick mold is pretty deteriorated underneath, so we're proposing to replace it with the exact same profile as the Greek Revival original brick mold that was in place. Also, some additional windows showing that the window detailing will be exactly as the original. The only difference here that we're proposing is the one-over-one, which is a little later in its history. And then some additional photos of materials in the back, just to, again, emphasize that we're trying to do, trying to stay in the language of most of the additions. The deck would be epée, the railing, this minimal brick, sorry, not brick, metal railing with wood handle, and then the stucco in this color that's pretty close to the neighbor. Again, just trying to do as minimal work as possible. That's all, thank you very much.
The upper two levels are not in work. Is that those separate apartments, and are those people going to be there during all of this construction?
Those are separate apartments. We are, we are still handling how that'll work. I think it would make most sense for them to not be there because of the amount of work that's being done to the cellar, so they wouldn't be. And if they were, we'd do it with a, the plan through the DOB.
The tenant protection.
Yes, the tenant protection plan.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If we have any testimony, is there anyone who would like to speak on this application? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I'll note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval.
Thank you. All right, any final questions, commissioners? I think we'll move to our discussion, okay. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is, application has two parts to it. One is at the front facade to install one-over-one windows, which after, actually, I should say, restoring the opening to their, its original length, and then installing the one-over-one window configuration. This building, at the time of the 1940 tax photo, had already had one-over-ones installed, as did many others in the row. And so this is something that is very common that we see with these transitional buildings. And then at the rear facade, it's really just a rear one-story addition filling in the notch next to the L and the deck, and the doors out to the rear yard. Commissioner Chen, would you take this one?
Yes. This is a very nice project, and I think that it's modest and is appropriately done. And I have no problem with any of the elements.
Commissioner Bland.
I agree. Very straightforward, typical of what we've seen, a fair amount of approvable.
Commissioner Chapeau.
Yeah, I agree. This is approvable as presented.
Commissioner Lutfi.
I agree.
Commissioner Chu.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum and Commissioner Ginsburg.
Appropriate.
Okay, I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Chen.
In the meta, LPC 25-03090, 230 Cumberland Street, Fort Greene Historic District, the application is to replace windows and construct a rear yard addition. Noting the building's style, scale, materials, and detail among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District, I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the design and materiality of the one-story partial width rear yard addition, featuring stucco cladding and top punch windows and door openings, will be in keeping with the residential character of the building and other buildings in the block, that the proposed rear yard addition will align with the existing rear extension in terms of projection, and therefore will not overwhelm the building or diminish the central green space, that the proposed one-over-one double-hung aluminum clad windows with profile brick mows and a black finish will harmonize with the transitional Greek Revival and Italianate style detail present at the building and the late 19th century alteration found at the building of, in this row, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Fort Greene Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapeau, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapeau.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Eight in favor and not opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Right. Next item is public hearing item number 12, LPC 25-08527, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Block 252, Lot 58, 35 Geralman Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style rowhouse built in 1846. The application is to construct a rear addition and alter the areaway.
Good afternoon. My name is Josh Key, partner at Aponimus Architecture. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our project at 5 Geralman. Originally built in 1846, 35 Geralman sits at the southwest corner of the Brooklyn Heights historic district. It was renovated in 1967 and converted into a two-family structure with two duplex units. Our project is to fully renovate the interior and convert it to a single-family residence. These are context photos, looking east and west along Geralman, along with photos at the bottom perpendicular on Columbia Place, noting that the low slope of the roof, which will not change, is not visible. These are historic tax photos from 1940, 1980, and present day. And these are context photos of the rear yard, where you'll note that the variety of heights, depths, textures, window sizes, and configurations of the other immediately adjacent buildings. You'll also note the empty lot immediately west, which is currently under construction. Some detailed shots of the stucco facade, the wood-framed stucco facade at the second and third floors, and two probe photos from that facade showing what appears to be original clavoured siding, which was stuccoed over at some point. It's also worthy of note in this photo that water and moisture seems to be penetrating the rear stucco and affecting the clavwards and the framing of that wall. Some context photos of the rear yard. The block plan showing other properties on the block that have full-width extensions. And the existing and proposed plot plan. And so part of our project is a modest extension on the second and third floors. And what's notable is that this property currently is the shallowest in this portion of the block, just under 30 feet clear depth, less than 600 square feet on the second and third floors each. And so what we're attempting to do with our proposal is to mediate between the depths of 33 to our west and 37 to our east. By extending those two feet on the second and third floors, we'll have a more natural stepping of the massing at this end of the block. Existing and proposed site plans. And then this is existing and proposed building sections with the red profile line indicating the proposed enlargement at the second and third floor, obviously, the removal of the greenhouse, which at the garden and parlor levels, and the new deck at the parlor level. We will not be affecting the profile of the roof, we'll simply be extending the slope for the additional two feet. Proposed section. Some enlarged sections of the rear facade. And again, some wall sections of the rear facade, showing more of the existing conditions of that wood-framed, clavoured, stucco-covered upper portion, and our new proposed second and third floor facade, which is a fiber cement clavoured to more closely match what was the existing condition. And this is before and after exenometric. So you can see in the existing, how this building is actually the shallowest in this portion of the block. And after the second and third floor extension, we're now sort of more evening out, we're mediating between the depth of 33, which is currently under construction, and 37. You can also see the clavoured siding and the newly exposed garden and parlor floors, where we're proposing a masonry facade to match with the existing sort of garden landscape walls on either side. The work we're doing at the front facade is all staff-level approvable. And there's also some additional work at the areaway, which you'll see in a few slides. So this is the existing rear facade in context with the other buildings. Immediately to the right is 33, which is under construction. And again, this just highlights the variety of massings, heights, textures, window sizes, scales, and configurations. And so with the proposed, we've tried our best to keep in kind with those alignments of the typical townhouse facade at the upper levels. The sills on the third floor will remain the same height. The windows are slightly taller to meet egress code, and we've done our best to maintain the spacing in the sort of existing configuration. And again, existing and proposed enlarged rear elevation. And then this is the work at the front areaway, where we're lowering, the existing areaway is at two levels. We were proposing to lower the section that's immediately adjacent to the sidewalk, so that the entire front areaway can be at one level and have two steps down. These are some existing photos of the current areaway. And some context photos of the same block. The upper two photos are 51 and 69 Geralman, where it's almost an identical condition, where one steps down, two steps to a level front areaway. And then the other photos are other properties on the block, which also have similar conditions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this one, commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Yes, Commissioner Chu.
On the rear facade, you're taking the sloped skylight piece out.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And what I'm seeing, you have an axonometric from existing and proposed. I'm trying to understand what is going and what is new. All right, that's good, thank you. On the left, yes.
This whole greenhouse glazing is going.
Yes.
The existing masonry wall to either side of that is going to remain.
Okay.
And that's what you're seeing here and here. And between those walls, we are constructing a new deck at the parlor level. And then, the current foundation wall that is supporting this vertical face of glazing is basically right here, and we're using that as a retaining wall for these steps to go down to an exterior lower garden underneath the deck, which will provide access to the basement.
So, at the roof of the skylight slope zone is being retained as the deck for the...
Correct, yes. There's an existing terrace, which will be, which will remain.
Remain.
But be slightly shallower.
So, you have this strange lip all around it, where your guardrails set back like a foot and a half from the edge there.
There's a slight parapet there, yes.
A parapet or just an extension of it? Does it come up higher?
Well, it is set in on all three sides.
Right.
But it is also a parapet, because, well, we're building up the roof, so we can provide drainage and sort of practical concerns.
So, can you show me where the parapet is? Is that in the section? Oh, I see. Oh, I see, no.
This is the existing terrace, and this dotted line is the new profile. We're now cladding this lower portion in brick, because it wasn't exposed before, because the greenhouse was in the way.
Oh, so the railing is on top of the parapet? It is not set behind it, as the rendering suggests?
Correct.
Okay. Can you go back to the axon? I just don't understand. I see, no, okay. Because you can see a hole behind the guardrail in that image.
Oh, yeah.
Right? There's like a hole back in there.
Yeah, it goes down, yes, below the rail.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, the back, the upper floors you're rebuilding, you're not gaining very much, so it's the condition that's causing you to want to do that?
Well, it's the condition for sure, but also, given that the floor plate is only 30 feet, any little bit will help. So, we felt the two feet was sort of the minimum we could take that made it worth it, but also kept it in a position relative to 33 and 37 that made sense. So, we didn't want to go too far.
Okay.
But, you know, it really allows us, especially on the second and third floors, to have more flexibility with the interior floor plan.
Yeah, I just thought you're not gaining too much, so I was curious about it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Luthe.
I'm assuming there's an entry door at that very bottom garden level. Is that true?
It is, yes.
I just didn't see it.
I can show you.
And is it...
Right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got it. So, here, you don't see anything, because the greenhouse comes to grade, but this is drawn, as if you're closer to the house.
Right, exactly.
Okay. All right, let's move to public testimony. We can come back to more questions after that. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, let's turn it over to Stephen to see if we have any remote participants.
Who's joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Judy Stanton.
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We can support this application as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval.
Okay. All right, so, testimony was supportive. Is there any other final comment you'd like to make before we move to our discussion? All right, commissioners, any final questions? All right, then let's begin that discussion now. Commissioner Luthe, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, so we are looking at a proposal to reconfigure the rear facade, including removing the glass greenhouse structure and the stuccoed wood-framed rear wall above, and then reconstructing two feet out at the upper floors with a fiber cement clambered, and reconfiguring the lower floors, actually increasing the green space and pulling the addition back. And this building is not one of a row and between buildings that have a variety of window types and sizes, and I think it's unusual in that it really was a wood-framed rear facade. So, we'll begin our discussion. Vice Chair Bland.
My hood. So, you'll remember, the house next door, which is now under construction, went through a rather extensive review here not so long ago. So, this house is right next to that. I mean, I think there's nothing to object to. In fact, everything to sort of say, all right, the '70s or whenever that sloping roof was put in is going away. It's a very handsome and very smart, I think, change. It is changing from a two-family to one-family. But the house is very small, I can imagine it would have been a very crowded two-family. I think everything they've done is perfectly approvable, and I guess so does the Brooklyn Heights Association, and so does Board Two, so I'm with them.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, I feel that this is appropriate. The, you know, it's fairly modest changes, and it brings it more into alignment and, you know, cleans up the bottom floors, so they can be more useful for them. So, it's, and the fenestrations, fine, so. And I think we're supposed, the areaway was in this as well, or?
Oh, right, the areaway, Corey.
But that's, it's also...
Can we flip to the areaway? Or Abby, can we flip to the areaway?
But I'm...
Similar to the previous application to alter the areaway to create that lower grade.
Yeah, I didn't have any problem with it. I just amend, I should refer to it perhaps.
Yes, thank you for thinking of it. All right, Commissioner Luthe.
Yeah, there's really nothing to criticize about this project. It's done very modestly and well in the back and also in the front. I'm a big fan of lowering areaways to make the, that first, that at-grade space much more usable and get light in there. I can approve this.
All right, Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, I think that this is appropriate and approvable.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Ever let it be said that I didn't try to find a way to be cranky in the afternoon? I can't approve the full rear facade addition for the usual reason, that the volume of the house is something that the commission protects, and by extending the full volume at the rear, even by just a smidgen, I think that you lose that historic volume in the historic sense. So, I could approve every aspect of this beautifully done job except for that.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chen.
Same here.
Okay. So, I do think we have enough to support it, as is Vice Chair Bland. I have this to...
Oh, darn, I can't read off of this. I was about ready to do it. "In the matter of 35 Geralman Street, the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, this is an application to construct rear yard additions and alter the areaway. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the proposed work at the rear facade and yard will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the lower floors of the proposed rear yard addition will project less into the rear yard than other additions on the block, and will not diminish the central green space, that the building is shallower than the rowhouses to the east and west, therefore, the demolition of the simply designed and altered rear facade and reconstruction of the top two floors in a plane slightly forward of the historic rear facade will not disrupt an existing unified row and will be harmonious with the range of depths of buildings on this block, that the proposed window openings at the reconstructed top floor will match the width of the existing openings, and their modified placement will maintain a rhythm of top floor openings consistent with this building and others in the block, that the design and materiality of the rear addition, featuring brick and fiber, cement board cladding, bluestone sills and coping, painted steel and punched openings with wood windows, will be in keeping with the historic cladding material at this facade and materials found at other rear yard additions on the block, that the lowered areaway will remain in keeping with the grade of many altered areaways found at buildings of this age and style within the historic district, that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the streetscape or the Brooklyn Heights Historic District."
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
John.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
No.
Commissioner Luthe.
Aye.
Seven in favor, one opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you. To the next item.
Last item of the day is public hearing item number 13, LPC 25-07793, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Block 267, Lot 3, 117 State Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style row house built in 1839. The application is to replace windows and ironwork, install a stoop in parlor floor entrance, and construct rooftop and rear yard additions.
My name is Rachel Frankel. 117 State Street, located in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, was built in 1837 in the Greek Revival style. 117 and its state and its row are typical of the Greek Revival style, and except for number 117, the row is largely intact today. At the front, we propose a new rooftop addition and replacement of the existing nonhistoric windows with one-over-one windows to match the others in the row. At staff level, we propose restorative work, including reconstructing the brownstone stoop, projecting enfrainment, parlor door, and decorative metal work. At the top of the slide is the row as it existed in 1940, with all windows one-over-one. Below is the row today, with all windows one-over-one, except at the very end, 109. Number 109 State Street. We propose one-over-one windows with Greek Revival-style brick mold to maintain the uniformity of the row. At the rear, in addition to the rooftop addition, we propose a rear yard extension. We believe our proposed extension fits nicely between its neighbors. Of the 33 four- and five-story rowhouses within the block, 27 of them have, or have approval from Landmarks Four, rear yard extensions, and five rowhouses have, or have approval from Landmarks Four, rooftop additions. The block's rear yard extensions range in height from one-story to the full five-story rowhouse height, which is next door to us. The sandboard map indicates that in 1916, all but two rowhouses in the block had a rear yard extension. Our two-story, 21-foot-four rear yard extension is proposed between a two-story, 10-foot-six extension and a five-story, five-story, 33-foot extension, both visible from Sydney Place. These are our existing, these are the existing condition photos of the rear facade, showing the existing two-story L with excavated rear areaway and decks at the parlor and second floor levels. You can see the two-story addition to the west on the upper right-hand side of the slide, and the five-story addition to the east, those photos on the lower left. At the rear, we propose replacing the modern extension with a new full-width basement-plus parlor-level extension with brick piers and wood infill. The roof of the proposed extension will serve as a terrace equipped with painted black metal guardrails. At the parlor level, we propose painted black metal stairs extending down to the rear yard. A new areaway, roughly four feet below grade, is also proposed, two and a half feet deeper than the existing. The work at the upper floors of the rear facade is restorative and to be reviewed at staff level. It includes window replacement, paint removal, and masonry restoration. The only change proposed is the dropped window sill to create a door to the proposed terrace. At the rooftop addition, we propose brick piers with wood and glass doors. This is the existing section with its modern rear yard extension. Proposed section with new rear yard extension and rooftop addition. Here are the basement floor plans with the existing below and the proposed above. Parlor level with the existing floor plan below and the proposed above. And lastly, roof addition, roof plan with the existing below and the proposed above. This is view E of the mockups, taken from Sydney Place. It shows maximum visibility of the proposed rear yard extension. There is no visibility at view E of the rooftop addition. At maximum visibility, the extension is mostly camouflaged by 115's two-story brick extension in front of it and 119's five-story, 33-foot extension behind it. Our proposal essentially replaces a view of a brick wall, that of 119, with a view of a brick wall, that of our proposed. 115's rear yard extension is about 18 inches deeper than those in the foreground, number 109 and 111. Due to number 113 having no extension, 115's extension appears rather prominently. Our proposed extension does not block neighbors' windows. These are views F and G of the mockups, taken from Sydney. They show maximum visibility of the proposed rooftop addition and guardrail. At maximum visibility, the rooftop addition and its guardrail are rather minimally visible. At maximum visibility, the rooftop addition and its guardrail are rather minimally visible. The only other visibility of the rooftop addition is view D, taken from the southeast corner of Clinton and State. There is no other visibility along State Street. View D, on the left, shows the addition at maximum visibility, and on the right is a zoomed-in view within that magenta square. On the right is a photo montage of the proposed rear yard extension juxtaposed with view E of the mockup to the left. To reiterate, this view shows maximum visibility of the rear yard extension. And here again is the photo montage, view E, showing that maximum visibility of the proposed extension. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any questions? Well, that's okay. Let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? All right, so come up one at a time, and just make sure that the green light is on at the base of the microphone, if not, push the button, and state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, my name is John Bonina. I'm joined by my wife Patricia Bonina, and together we've owned the house at 115 State Street, directly adjacent and directly abutting the proposed application before this tribunal. I want to thank you all for your time. I know it's getting late, I will try not to overstate my welcome. The proposal is really inconsistent with the core concepts of Landmarks and inconsistent with the extensions previously permitted by Landmarks on this block. Speaking to, from Sydney Place where some of those photos were taken in the direction of my house, and mine's the one that was sticking out a couple of inches, that was approved in 1994 when we bought our home, all of those are ten to, I guess mine is ten-foot-eight or whatever it is, it appears like sticking out a little further on those photos because there is no extension at 113 at my immediate abutting neighbors on the other side. Each of those were approved and each of those extensions were approved by Landmarks over a course of time, most recently work at 109, some years, like in the last couple of years. I only note with respect to the comparisons, there's an apples and oranges comparison attempting to be made with respect to my neighbors at 119 on the other side, insofar as that rather large extension was made in 1920, some forty years before Landmarks came into being. I think the appropriate comparison is with 109, 111, and 115, and each of those have a ten-to-ten-foot-eight or whatnot extension. So we object to the application and the proposal on the grounds that it is a significant intrusion into, the word I've heard today is doughnut, and is inconsistent with the extensions previously proposed. I also note with the pictures, some of them taken from Sydney seem to either be when the mockup was painted a dark color so as to be obscured, or from an angle behind a tree. I have pictures that have been submitted, I did get email confirmation that my submission was received. This is from the door out my back extension, looking towards Sydney. If you need it, I can hand these up as well. This is from Sydney, looking in the direction of the extension, you could see the bright, they were asked to repaint it bright orange, and you can see it, bright orange, sticking out rather extensively. I'm not sure if it was brighter on the day I took the picture, or if it was just picture quality or what, but it really does stick out a good ten-to-eleven feet beyond any of the other approved extensions. Based on these issues and others, Community Board, Land Use Committee, and the full board recommended disapproval. I also, I want to pause for a moment and state that with respect to the proposal of a stoop, I have no disagreement, and thank you if you do, in fact, do the same. Stoops are a big part of Brooklyn, I've lived here my entire life. The only other thing I want to do is talk about, truthful, interrelated, I've heard again today that I have a two-story extension, I've been there thirty-one years, I haven't seen the second story. We have a one-story extension solely on what's sometimes called the parlor level, the garden level is not an extension, it was built on brick, so there's the step-down, which I think you saw in the last two presentations ago, there is no extension on the garden level at all, and they were told that at Land Use. The only other point I want to make is if they are digging into the basement or garden level, that proposes safety concerns for the abutting property owners. The plan as submitted doesn't seem to include any proposal for shoring or underpinning as they dig down, and that's particularly, you know, if this was out in Iowa, that's one thing, but these are directly adjoining shared properties, buildings that share a common wall, and I know my neighbors have submitted letters addressing the safety concerns with respect to this contractor and prior abutting landowners' homes being rendered uninhabitable. We're concerned about that, and we're concerned not only about the lack of underpinnings and shoring, but the fact that when this was raised at Land Use, they were directed by Land Use to reach out to us about an access agreement, and we haven't heard a single word from them. So we have had to hire our own lawyer because of that, and we have concerns about the extent of the extension.
I'm sorry, do you mind summarizing the remainder?
The safety, that's exactly what I'm doing, thank you.
We have three minutes.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. So the extent of the extension, the safety concerns, and for those reasons, we respectfully request that this committee disapprove.
All right, thank you. And if you'd like to pass the photos, we can, you can give them to Steve then, and okay, and we'll circulate them and return them to you. Okay, the next, okay, next speaker, please come up and state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Sven Krogis, I'm a tenant at 119. I've been a longtime Brooklyn resident, my father was the editor of the Brooklyn Heights Press and actually wrote a book on the promenade and on the Brooklyn Bridge Park, Lightfather. So just, you know, I guess my thoughts are a couple, you know, on the background side of things, I just, I think it's worth noting, this is, this is a flipper project, it's going from a three-family rental to a one-family, well, a one-family mans, essentially, and, you know, so this, everything that we're talking about in terms of the desert errata of it, it's all, you know, what a flipper would want or a developer want, this is not an end family, as far as I know. On the issue that we discussed, you know, we have looked a little into the developer's history, and, you know, 351 Warren Place, where, Warren Street, where there's been an issue there, you know, that they built there, and there's litigation currently ongoing on that, and, you know, we're very, very concerned about, obviously, the underpinning and damage to party walls, et cetera. To reiterate a point that John made about the info, we haven't heard a sausage from these, from these guys. They bought it in October, November, we haven't heard a thing, so it's absolute, we're sort of in sort of an informational, you know, blackout, and I would say that the presentation itself, which we saw, it's essentially unaltered from the CB2 Land Use, there's no sort of 3D color photos of what it will look like, what it's, you know, it's very rudimentary, very hard to say what the actual project will look like. Once again, just to, you know, I too have a photo, you know, taken from my basement, saying, you know, this thing extends well beyond, well beyond the row from 109 to 115, so it's the Vista from Sydney, this is, this extends well out. And of course, with respect to 119, our building, as you can see in the sandborne maps, our extension predates actually even earlier, it must have predated 1916. So that's not really a comparison, both on the, and you can see it even from the photos, the mansard roof on the fifth floor, that was already there. So those, you know, both on the rear yard extension and on the rooftop extension, 119 is not an appropriate, an appropriate indicator, because it was, it predated LPC by many decades. So in any event, as I, I think we're of a concern that, you know, that once again, the Sydney Vista, the 109, 115, you know, that row, I think that should be the demarcation line, and then extension up to that line, okay, so be it, but beyond that, it seems excessive and against, you know, the appropriateness standards. Thank you.
Is there another, anyone else? Yes, please come up. And again, just state your name before you start, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Christian Holland, and I am here on behalf of 136 State Street, it's where I live, I'm here with my, I'm here on behalf of my neighbors. It's a four-unit co-op across the street from 117, 117 State Street. We are opposing the addition of the proposed habitable structure for the roof, 117. Together, my neighbors and I have lived in the building for a combined forty years, although I think this pales in comparison to many of my neighbors who are going to be speaking out, objecting to the project. We understand that one of the criteria that Landmarks and Preservation Commission uses to decide whether a proposed structure can be built atop a building in a landmark district is to check to see if the structure can be viewable from street level. While the proposed structure on 117 State may not be viewable by most people enjoying the State Street from its bluestone sidewalks, we, we can see it. We can see it from 136 State Street, our neighbors can see it from their windows, we can see it from our stoops, the majority of the people in our block can see it. And we can see it from those stoops and windows which have existed largely unaltered since the nineteenth century. To us, this means that the proposed addition would undermine the interests of the very individuals who bear the largest burden of maintaining the neighborhoods as historic features. We do this very work because we value the historic character of the neighborhood, which is composed of a constellation of details that exist only in this very place. The addition of top 117 would nullify this historic character. From what we can see from our building, the addition is also unprecedented. Moreover, the addition on 117's roof isn't being proposed to address the grave housing crisis in New York. The addition also isn't being proposed by an individual who called the building their home, yet we, the residents of State Street, who are mandated by the LPC to be stewards of the historic character of the neighborhood, would have to live with the new addition for posterity. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
Thank you very much. Andreas Wagner, I live in 119 State Street. I just want to second everything that was said by my previous speakers, and I want to add that 119 State Street, we have engaged an architect to look at the plans, and I hope that the commissioners and that you have seen his input, because it raises a number of questions, it is absolutely not clear from the drawings and the papers that were filed, what exactly is going to happen. We've seen the mockup, but that is obviously not even the tip of the iceberg, so we don't know exactly what it's planned, our architect had a number of questions, so I just want to raise that once again with you, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think that is everyone, so we will now move to the Zoom participants, and I'll turn it over to Stephen to see if we have anyone on Zoom to speak.
Attendees joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelists, and we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Apologies, had some trouble unmuting. So I'll be very brief, I wanted to reiterate what some of my neighbors have said. I've lived at 119 State Street since 1994, my husband and I raised our daughter there, and I want to express my appreciation for everything the LPC has done to keep Brooklyn Heights so beautiful. We know, we're excited to have new neighbors at 117, we understand that renovation and change is part of life in the city, but, and it's also true that we do have a large rear extension on our building, but please recognize that five families live in 119, we've all raised families there, and that the new extension just is too big, it's just too big. The front of the building looks great, welcome the idea of renovating the stoop, you know, hope they do a great job of it, it will make the block look much better, but the extension is huge, and it will just obliterate any sense of privacy on our tiny little balcony that's right next door to it. In fact, even just with the mockup looming over us, we've stopped using it, it will completely, you know, block out any natural light for our neighbors on the lower floors, and, you know, that's a big change and a big decline in the quality of life, it's, you know, very clearly visible from Sydney Place. And I also second the concerns about, you know, protecting the structural integrity of our, you know, pre-Civil War home, which shares a party wall with 117. You know, any construction work takes a great deal of care, we just did not have the confidence that they're gonna do that, they, you know, have, as another neighbor said, not been in contact, they haven't been great actors so far, they had pretty, you know, pretty disastrous asbestos removal that, you know, rained down debris on the building and ended up with even debris landing in the mouth of one of my neighbors, it was just very messy work. So in light of all these concerns, you know, we hope you'll reconsider the size of the extension, it just, it just needs to be smaller, it's too big, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Judy Stanton.
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We do not support this application. The proposed extension is too deep, too deep an intrusion into the block's rear yards doughnut. It is double the size compared to typical extensions in this row, and in this particular row of State Street, the rear facades of all four houses to the west of 117 feature tea porches or have extensions with similar footprints. Each is visible from Sydney Place, as is the rear of this house. Any new extension here should both respect the scale of that kind of footprint and be contextual with that type of design. This is the approach successfully taken at 109 State Street, whose rear renovation was approved by the commissioners in 2021. In addition, the visibility photos in the presentation are misleading. The proposed rear addition will be highly visible from the backyard opening on Sydney Place, and the top addition has some visibility from State Street. We could easily see the rooftop addition mockup from State Street. The proposed rooftop addition should be reduced in size. We also share the concerns of the neighbors rightly calling out the owner for performing work on the roof and in the yard of this building before receiving LPC and DOB permits. The DOB issued a stop-work order in April, although inexplicably, the Landmarks Commission has not acted on reports that go back to January. The owner's prior construction violation record at other sites in Brooklyn is also very troubling. So in this regard, the proposal to allow the builder in the field to copy or match the facade details of a neighboring house for reconstructing the stoop and the entry right here, although those are both good ideas, without preparing detailed drawings for the Landmarks Commission and the public to review in advance, it should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Johnson, speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HDC finds the bulk of the rear yard addition to be inappropriate and unnecessary. It is highly visible from Sydney Place and should be aligned with the neighbor directly to the west at 115 State Street. We find the rooftop extension to be modest and appropriate, but the windows on the front facade should be six over six, as is the stylistically correct historic configuration for this Greek Revival house. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be John Graham. Our next speaker will be John Graham. John, we're ready for you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society. The Victorian Society is happy to see many of the changes which the applicants are proposing. However, we feel that the presentation lacks some important details and believe that the applicant is ignoring significant historic material. On the front facade, removal of the modern infill and creation of a new stoop, parlor floor entrance and door surround, and addition of cast stone lintels at the parlor floor windows will bring this row house much closer to its original appearance. However, the new front windows should be six over six to match the Greek Revival style of the building. But there aren't any notes explaining what will happen to the historic iron window grills at the basement level, front facade. These appear to match the window grills at 109 State Street, the inspiration for the new stoop and areaway railings. The basement grills should be retained. We also saw on board 10 photo four what appears to be a 12-foot-long section of historic iron railing at the parlor floor balcony rear facade. A modern extension was attached, but the historic material appears to be intact. It should be salvaged and reused on-site if there's a possibility it's original to this house. The applicant constructed a mock-up of the rooftop addition, but there aren't any photos from street level which indicate its visibility above the front facade. There are no notes on its visibility on the section drawing A111. Without photos or notes, we have no way to determine if the addition will be seen from the street. This information should be provided. The rear addition will be visible from Sydney Place, but in context with other rear additions from a distance of 100 feet, we find this acceptable. We were happy to see that the addition will leave the upper two floors intact. We also liked that the tripartite facade of the rear extension resembles historic tea porches. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends conditional disapproval on the condition that the rear yard extension should align with the depth of the adjacent property at 115 State Street. LPC received a letter from Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler recommending denial. And we received 12 letters recommending denial from individuals.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
And before you do that, if I could just address the testimony about work being done without permit. That was reported to Landmarks. We did receive complaints this spring of construction underway in the rear yard and the rooftop addition. We looked into it. It was construction of the mock-ups that we require, and because of that, we did not take any enforcement action.
Because it's fresh in my mind, I'd like to respond to what John Graham said. The window grills at the basement are not historic. They're not historic, though we are maintaining them. The metalwork, and perhaps I'll go back so we can all be looking at the same thing. Okay, so the bottom right-hand slide at the parlor level, that wrought iron, it's not Greek Revival style. It's, I highly doubt, and our staff preservationist and his supervisor, we had a site visit, and we concluded that it's not, it probably has nothing to do with the house, and at some point, somebody stuck it on there. And then the third point, let's see, oh, there is no visibility from State Street other than that view I showed. In fact, a prior iteration issue included the whole no visibility from State Street, and it was decided if there's no visibility, what are you showing? I'm showing nothing. So that answers John Graham's, I think that addresses the three questions he had. Some of the requests for more detailed information about the restorative work that we're doing, that is going to be reviewed at staff level. And I was instructed not to take up time with what will be worked out at staff level, which follows the rules of Landmarks. Let's see. The structural issues that were brought up by some of the neighbors, there's a set of Department of Building drawings, there are engineering drawings, and that has been addressed there. It's not really appropriate, I think, to talk about structural issues here. That was never something that we, that anyone thought we should do, and I don't think it's appropriate. Let's see. Let's see. And I guess, you know, the big thing is, you know, I know nobody likes change, and I know nobody wants anybody to build anything that's going to take up space in the donut. But this, this blocks nobody's windows. It's two stories. If you go back to the plans, 119 is sort of an L. And we're not blocking anything. We're two stories. The fence is just about two stories. So I don't really see that as obstructing anybody's, it faces north. There's no sunshine there ever, and that's why the rendering is appropriate and properly done. Let's go back, let's go back to it. It's dark back there. Sunshine never falls down there. It might fall the top of 119 and maybe a little bit at the rear yard, but it never falls there. And this is it. I don't see this as something that's obstructive. It's not a major intervention. So.
All right, thank you. Can you just also, I think I saw on the plan that there is a 37-foot-deep rear yard.
Thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three feet after, okay, 33 feet after the addition. And I know the additions adjacent to you are about 10 feet deep, nine feet or 10, six. But I didn't see a dimension for your addition, so just wanted to clarify.
My addition is 21 foot four.
Oh, okay, I see it now.
It actually looks like it must be a little bigger.
Yeah, okay. Any final questions, Commissioners? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Still moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so this is a proposal to reconstruct a stoop at the front facade that is slightly different in depth than the historic stoop would have been. It is also to seek approval for one-over-one double-hung windows, which existed at this building at the time of the tax photo, when it already had its stoop removed. But there were other houses in the row that had stoops and one-over-one windows at the time of the tax photo. So it's similar to an earlier application, that's sort of a transitional condition that we see. And at the back, it's the proposal for the two-story rear yard addition, which in the block plan looks like it's as deep as some of the other additions further into the block, but it is visible in the context of additions that are about 10 feet deep, and then the one addition that is deeper, and it's seen against the backdrop of that deeper addition. And so we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to do this one?
Thanks. Okay, so I think the front stoop is fine. I think that the windows and everything related to the front facade are totally fine. I wish there was a floor plan of the roof additions, so we could see what's in it and understand it. I do note that on the portion of the block that's shown on the site plan drawing, there are relatively few rooftop additions. And some of them, anyway, are partial or, you know, slight, not full width. So I think that that could be something to look at, especially since there is some visibility of it, it seems. In terms of the rear yard addition, there's two ways to go with it, right? You could look at the portion of the block that's shown on the site plan, which shows plenty of two-story rear yard additions that extend about the same depth as this. On the other hand, the State Street portion of the block, which is a row, with one exception in the middle that had an obvious addition before the commission was here, they have a relatively more restrictive pattern. And then there's the issue of visibility, right? Normally, when we think about these things, rear yard additions, they're judged, their depth is judged in relation to adjacent buildings and also in, you know, in relation to visibility. So I think, I think because of the visibility, I would suggest that the rear yard addition extend 21 foot four only on the basement level and on the first floor level, that it align with the neighbor. I think that would be an appropriate solution that would improve the visibility of the proposed addition and bring it into a tea porch proportion that is pretty consistent on that particular row of houses.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
So on all the front work, it's fine. You know, as Commissioner Goldblum said, it would be good to have a rooftop plan, but I think that's all right. And I'm somewhat torn, but I think, and I'm curious what the other Commissioners say, because I think Commissioner Goldblum's suggestion of one floor at the full depth and then stepping back may make a lot of sense. Unlike the two buildings over to the left, this is facing the full donut, and so the added addition may not be an issue because you're not near another building. And I do realize there's the five-story addition to the right of the building. So I'm sort of on the fence about that. I would definitely support what Commissioner Goldblum recommended.
Commissioner Chen.
I'm in a similar vein here. I think that the front portion is fine. The front facade work is fine. I think the contacts in the back, and I'm... Looking at the contacts is hard to tell, and I think that I would defer to my Brooklyn Heights expert standing to my right.
Its expert would love to be not here right now.
That would be Vice Chair Blant.
Trying to figure out exactly why this is as controversial as it seems to be. But it is, and it is uniformly with not only the neighbors, but with Lincoln Wrestler or with others. So there's something going on here that I'm kind of maybe not aware of. But maybe a compromise is in order, and I hadn't thought of the compromise that Commissioner Goldblum has offered up, but it certainly would reduce the impact in the donut. So maybe that's a way to go. There are other good things, and John Graham, I think, was rightly pointing the good things out about this proposal, and I don't think we should forget those. The stoop, the still-called tea porch idea, the upper windows, et cetera. So maybe that's a decent compromise that would make everybody happy.
Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, actually, before Commissioner Goldblum spoke, I was thinking about the same kind of idea, actually. Because although there are many similar extensions, this little area, it's not just that there's a row that's to it that have the visibility. So it's, I think this is a reasonable compromise, maybe, to give the applicant at least some of what they're looking for, and at the same time, try to have it presented as a little more appropriate. And the other reason I think we can allow more than what is existing there is that while there is only one large extension, it's right next to them. So, you know, normally, we give a little bit of appreciation to the fact that you've got somebody very large next to you, even though the others on the other side are not. And with regard to the rooftop, I just want to make sure that it is, in fact, not visible across State Street at ground level. Obviously, if it's visible at a higher level, it's not something we, you know, we're talking about street-level visibility, so. So that, I would agree with the other Commissioners.
And I think the staff confirmed that in evaluating the mock-up in the field. Commissioner Lovey.
I'm gonna start out the way Fred did. And just with something that was noted, or maybe I noted it. When you look at the, sort of the street, the donut, there are so many extensions on this block. And some of them, some of them are like exactly in the same range as this one, and there are others that are longer. So there have been a lot of incursions here, and I, you know, I think it's, I have no idea. I wasn't around when all these other additions happened, but it does. I'm a little perplexed about why this is really irking the neighbors. Although, you know, I'll come back to that. So I'm gonna come back to it, but I do want to just address some things first. Number one, there are a lot of good things about this project. The work on the front is good. Stoop, they're replacing these windows, and they're replacing them with wood. Actually, all of the windows that are being replaced on this building are being replaced with wood. Now, I applaud that. We applaud applicants who come to us with, you know, cladwood windows. They went one step beyond. That deserves even more applause. So I don't want to miss that. And also, the end, the double-hung existed at the time of the tax vote. So it seems like that shouldn't be anything to get too upset about. Then, the rooftop addition, we understand, is set back, and there is no visibility based on staff observation. Now, I do happen to agree that we could have seen better drawings. In fact, I think all of the drawings could have been better. This is not of the caliber that this particular architect normally presents to us. So I think you did yourself a little bit of a disservice. When you move to the back, I, again, I'm gonna start at the top because they did restorative work here. Not with the brick, but also with the windows, wood windows. And I think that that's a positive thing that we should applaud. Now, I think the issue of the visibility here has to do with the fact that, look, there's a very low fence on Sydney Place, and if there was, if that didn't exist, we actually are a little more relaxed with that condition because there's nothing that can be done to change it. And the fact that there is this very large addition next to it, this is only two stories. There's a five-story addition next to it. That is brick. It, I think it mitigates the situation here, and I do think that this extension can, you know, because it's also brick, blend into that. So I'm actually quite okay with the height. So I'm actually quite okay with the height and the depth, for the reason that I talked about. Immediately, there's a lot of incursions here in this donut. I want to see, there are a couple of other things. So, no, you know what? I think that's it. I think they're, oh, I think they, I have to say that I think the metal guardrail they used, very simple, fine. I like the fact that they painted things black in the back, in terms of the windows, and that's it.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
All right, thanks. Commissioner Chu.
I'm in agreement with Janie. I'm looking at this block, and I keep asking myself the same question, why is this so different from 90% of the block that we're looking at right now? And in fact, most of the block is five stories, not four stories, and some of the five stories have additions on the roof as well. So height, the fact that we are next to a five-story building, again, and I will echo Janie and others' comments, that the documentation leaves some questions in our minds, which is not helping them. But as stated, if the mock-up was done, we could have seen photos to show us that we can't see the addition on top, and that would have relieved our concerns there. But the larger building with the larger extension predated all of this. And to me, that set a precedent for the extension back there. Right next to it makes a case for this, in my mind. The way I look at it, it makes a case for this to be a transitional depth. And because of the height of the neighboring building at a story taller, it takes most of the attention of any site from the street side. And again, we'd like to confirm that you cannot see the addition on the roof here. But I do agree that there are lots of good things about this. Many of our applicants do not leave two floors of existing facade on the rear. They only leave one, and sometimes we ask for two. This one didn't even ask for it. So I, I'm actually okay with this proposal. I think it's appropriate.
All right. All right, so this is a little unusual, but I'm sort of trying to figure out where we land, and I know a couple of you on this side of the table were a little on the fence, and you could vote for it as. And I know, Vice Chair Bland, you felt like a compromise could work to make everybody happy, but I think your initial instinct was that it was appropriate, or am I misreading that? And I'll check with Commissioner Chen as well.
Let's check with everybody, Ellen.
Commissioner Chen, did you have any more thoughts about it? I know you.
I think Commissioner Chu.
And I think I noted also that there were other large additions within the block, and that this one is seen against the backdrop of a much bigger one on. So I, I think I could support it, and of course, we would make sure that whatever structural plans you develop, we would take a look at that as well, to ensure that there's safety. So I, do we think, I think we might have six, so.
I hope you do.
All right. I don't know, Commissioner.
I'm hoping you have six.
Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to make the motion? And we'll see where we end up. Okay.
Wood, but I have to find it. Okay, hold on. Here it is. Nope, I got it. In the matter of docket, 25 there, 0007793117, State Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District. A Greek Revival, Revival-style row house built in 1839. The application is to replace windows and ironwork and install a stoop and parlor floor entrance and construct rooftop and rear yard additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, maybe, binding, that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed one-over-one double-hung wood windows will match the historic windows in terms of materials, details, and operation, and the black finish will be consistent with a variety of late 19th and early 20th century finishes found within the row and historic district. Whoops. I just lost the page, but I'm going back. That all of the buildings in this row, except one, have had one-over-one windows at their front facades since at least the mid 20th century, therefore, the work will not diminish the unity of the row. That except for minimum visibility of the rooftop addition from a limited vantage point at a distance, the proposed additions will not be visible from public thoroughfares in conjunction with the front facade of these building, of the building. That the rear and sides of the additions will only be seen from public thoroughfares through a limited gap between buildings and against background, the backgrounds of taller secondary facades. That the rear yard addition will not rise to the full height of the building, and the rooftop addition will be set back from the front and rear facades, thereby retaining a sense of the building's original scale and massing. That the additions will be simple in design and form, typical in terms of material and neutral in finish. That the proposed rear yard addition will be significantly smaller than an addition at an immediate neighboring building in terms of number of floors and projection into the rear yard, and will be consistent with other rear yard additions within the block. That the cumulative effect of the added volume of the additions will not overwhelm the building or the surrounding buildings, and that the proposed work will not detract from the significant architectural or historic character of the building or the Brooklyn Heights Historic District.
All right, Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, let's call the vote.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Six in favor, two oppose. The motion passes.
There we go, so that's approved. Thank you. But we do ask you to take care with the work and provide the details that the staff needs to properly evaluate everything, and we encourage you to engage the neighbors and work with the neighbors to address their concerns. All right, and that concludes our session. Once again, Diana, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart and all of our hearts, Chair. Your deep commitment to the agency and your service to the city. Sorry to put you.
No, no.